The meeting of the Waycross City Commission is now called to order. At this time, our Mayor pro tem Commissioner Henry Strickland will introduce our Minister of Invocation.
Today, our Minister of Invocation will be Chief Eddings. I have enjoyed his prayers and it is always a wonderful thing to know that the people of this community can have such leaders that can pray and be a great leader. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you've become accustomed, I'm going to say a few words before I pray. When Commissioner Strickland asked me last night to pray, he gave me too much lead time, so I got to gather some thoughts. In Matthew, Chapter 18, Peter asks Jesus, he said, "Lord, how oft shall I forgive my brother that sinned against me?" And she says, "Shall I forgive him till seven times?" And Jesus said unto him, "I say unto thee, not until seven times, but..." And I've learned, I'm not an English major, but when there's a comma after that, there's something important or there's a good instruction fixing to follow that. Jesus said, "Not until seven times, but until seven times seventy." And I go and do the math and that's four hundred and ninety times. But I've learned through my life that Jesus didn't mean four hundred and ninety times. He meant that by the time you forgive that individual four hundred and ninety times, it becomes second nature, it's just part of who you are. And I'm so glad that Jesus does not keep account of it because I would have long used up my four hundred and ninety times. And then in Psalm 136, it starts out with, "Oh, give thanks unto the Lord, for he is good; for his mercy endureth forever." There are twenty-six verses in that Psalm and each of those verses end with, "For his mercy endureth forever." I looked up mercy and it said it's compassion or forgiveness shown towards someone, and here's a key thing, whom it is within one's power to punish. So whoever gives that mercy, they have the power, the authority to punish that person that they're giving that forgiveness or that compassion to. So if you've ever been to church any amount of time, you've heard about Jesus died on the cross for us. And as I thought about that, getting ready for this prayer, I don't ever remember hearing anyone talking about Jesus died for the person that just slapped him upside the face before he went to the cross. The person that mocked him, the person that spat on him, the person that beat him with the cat of nine tails, that beat him so bad that he wasn't even recognizable to his own people that had been around him. And that mercy and compassion that Jesus had was even towards that person that poked him with the spear. That's amazing that we serve a God that could have had authority over them to have done away with them right then, but he had love and compassion and mercy even on those people that were ready to take his life. I know I need to be reminded of that regularly and about God's mercy and his love. And it reminds me that no matter what I find myself into, the trouble that I may get, I can always go to Jesus at any time and he is ready and willing to forgive me and show me that mercy and compassion any time of the day, twenty-four hours a day. And that message isn't just for me, it's for anybody, that Jesus loves us all that much, that he shows that mercy and compassion. Let's pray. Dear God, I thank you for this day and I thank you for the opportunity that you've given me, dear God, to speak your word to not only the people in this building today, but those that'll hear it by internet and by TV, dear God. Lord, let us each be reminded of your mercy, dear God, and not take advantage of it, but be grateful and thankful, dear God, that you love us enough that you'll show us mercy. God, I thank you for the mercy that you've showed on our community, dear God, as we've gone through this last year. God, we're coming out way better on the other side and that's only because that you've given the leaders of this community, you've given the department heads, those that have action and say in how we move forward, you've given them wisdom and understanding to correctly guide us through what we've gone through and I thank you for that, dear God. Lord, I thank you for this meeting that we're about to have and Lord, I ask that you be with us and that the things that we say and do, dear God, are pleasing to you. In your son, Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Our pleasure leaves to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We thank Chief Eddings for the invocation. And before we go into our meeting, just in case we have some guests, I'd like to look at our decorum that is listed on the inside of your program. And in it, I want to just read what it says for our hearing. And this is Section 266. "The mayor, commissioners, staff, and citizens in attendance shall conduct themselves in a professional and respectful manner, except when specifically authorized by the mayor. All remarks, comments, and questions shall be directed to the mayor and not to individual commissioners, staff, or citizens in attendance. A commissioner, staff, or citizen in attendance shall not speak at a meeting until the commissioner, staff, or citizen in attendance has been recognized by the mayor and granted permission to speak or ask a question. All comments or questions made by commissioners, staff, or citizens in attendance shall address the motion that is being discussed or be pertinent to the agenda item before the commission. Any and all remarks, personal remarks, comments, or questions are inappropriate. The mayor shall enforce these rules of decorum. If a commissioner believes that a rule has been broken, said commissioner can raise a point of order. A second is not required. The mayor can rule on the question or the mayor can allow the commissioners to debate the issue and decide the issue by majority vote." Madam Clerk, do we have, I guess, do we have any guests today?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. No, sir, not for unofficial actions.
No, okay, very good. So at this time, executive duties?
Mr. Mayor, we need to schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation of the property at 1911 Memorial Drive. If that's all right with everyone, we'll set that on July 20th at 4:30, followed by a public hearing for alley closure, the alley running in an orderly direction between Mary Street and Isabella Street that had to be rescheduled because it wasn't published also on the 20th at 4:45 PM. I would also like to point out mainly for our newspaper, Mr. Nolte, is that we need to have also think about a called meeting of the commission and we're looking at that for June the 30th at four o'clock. We had a public hearing on the budget and that will need to be set for a resolution on that day.
Thank you. And you said that would be June the 30th?
Wednesday, June 30th at four o'clock.
And at that point, we can also take up the post seven for our commission as well?
If that is the commission's will, absolutely could be added to the agenda. Yes, sir.
Excellent. Any discussion, we can go to the discussion of the appointments for the Waycross and Ware County Planning Commission. For post five, we have Jim Brown and for post eight, we have Joe Skinner. Is there a motion to receive them?
Side move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Hopkins and seconded by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines. At this time, is there any discussion concerning these two posts?
Mr. Mayor, we'd just like to thank Mr. Brown and Mr. Skinner both for serving on this board.
Thank you, Commissioner Hopkins. At this time, we will move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. These appointments will continue. At this time, Madam City Manager, do you have a report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to invite everybody to the Fourth of July celebration at Bit Tanner Field on April 4th, Sunday. Come out and have a good time. The food trucks, DJ, and music will be there starting at five o'clock. And I just want to tell everyone to have a happy Father's Day, all the males out there and any male figures that play a part in any children's life and as well as my father and grandfathers and my husband, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just want to make a small correction. It's not April, it's July.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, sweetheart, we know, everybody knows we just, what you meant, July the 4th. And when everyone come out, I just want to appreciate the staff doing their part on that as well. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just for a public service announcement, the city of Waycross has a citywide job resource fair and it will be offered in the month of August on the 11th. That time will be from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Again, that is Wednesday, August the 11th, 2021. And we're asking that you bring with you multiple copies of your resume, come dressed professionally, and be ready to meet with employers. And that will be located at C.C. McCray City Auditorium, 865 Pendleton Street here in Waycross, Georgia. At this time, are there any public remarks? We will hear the consideration for our official action, Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar, approval of minutes. Waycross City Commission Planning and Information Session, Monday, April 19, 2021, 5:00 PM. Waycross City Commission Planning and Information Session, Monday, May 17, 2020, 5:00 PM. Waycross City Commission Planning and Information Session, Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, 3:00 PM. Waycross City Commission Meeting, Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, 5:00 PM. Ordinance for second readings. An ordinance to abandon and close the unopened alley between Watts Street and Clough Street as hereafter describes to authorize a quitclaim deed to establish an effective date and to repel conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. An ordinance of the city of Waycross to create a new public park at 845 and 847 Folks Street to repel conflicted ordinances, to provide for severability, to provide for effective date, and for other purposes. There are no privilege license or renewals. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, is there a motion to receive the consent calendar?
Just one question.
Commissioner Davis?
That park on Folks Street has not been named yet, right?
Yes, sir, no, sir, it's not been named.
Mr. Mayor?
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion or questions, I'm sure we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent calendar passes. And now, Ms. Linda? Ms. Linda Jones is coming with our bids.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Our first item tonight is bid number FY21-24, Morningside Drive and Coral Road. We've sent invitations to bid to all of our local area road construction contractors and we've received, that's for the pavement replacement on Morningside Drive and Coral Road. We've received three bids on this project and after review, it's our recommendation to award the bid to Allen Owens Construction and Paving of Blackshear, Georgia for $125,959.50. This is the lowest and best bid, meeting all of our specifications, and this is to be paid out of LMIC funds.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Is there a motion to receive this bid?
Move.
Second the motion.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Davis and seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this bid?
Linda, this is just a portion now of Coral Road and just a short portion of Morningside, am I correct?
I believe so, yes, ma'am, for that part. I don't have the exact...
If I understand, it's from, where Seminole intersects with Coral and you go down Morningside where Jasmine intersects.
Okay.
It's not going to be the whole street on either one.
Okay, yes, ma'am. They did not, I don't have those exact intersections for that, but I believe you're correct on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We had some discussion. I'd rather move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This bid is approved. Ms. Linda?
Our last item tonight is annual bid FY22 Vet Services for Waycross Animal Service. We've received three bids from our area veterinarians and after staff review, it's our recommendation to award this bid to Satilla Animal Hospital as being the overall lowest and best bid being submitted. This does include a four-year optional extensions, annual renewals, if all parties are in agreement and there are no increases. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Linda. We have heard the reading of the bid. Is there a motion to receive this bid?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines, seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Is there any further discussion on this bid?
I have one question. It was the same bid from last year, we just extended it or it's a new bid?
Ma'am, I asked, I reached out to both of the veterinarians for the canine unit Gibson, they extended for another year with no price increase. Satilla Animal Hospital did have price increases, so we went out for bids again.
Again, I see.
But when we got them back in, they were still the lowest, even with those price increases.
Okay, thank you, because I knew that they were the lowest last year.
Last year, yes, ma'am.
And they had extended bid and it kept it the same.
Yep.
So they had increased. Okay, thank you, Linda.
We have a motion, a second. Moving into voting, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This bid is approved. Thank you, Ms. Linda. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Waycross, Georgia to amend Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Departments, Division 3, Purchasing Department, Section 2-320, Operations or Purchasing System, to repel conflicting ordinances, to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date, to provide for renumbering or relettering, and for other purposes. By Dr. Business Ordinance, the city commission will amend Section 2-320 of the Waycross Code of Ordinance, recognizing the effects of inflation and thereby increasing the threshold of contracts requiring formal written bids and formal requests for proposals from $5,000 to $10,000. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I could, it's Article 6 and not Article 4, just for reference.
Article 6 and not Article 4. Thank you. With that being corrected in our verbiage, do we have a motion to receive this ordinance?
Move for approval.
It is motioned by our Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second the motion.
It's been, well, Commissioner Hopkins has seconded. Any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This ordinance passes. Madam Clerk?
Resolution. A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia to award bid contract to Allen Owens Construction and Paving for payment replacement project on Morningside Drive and Coral Road and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will award contract to Allen Owens Construction and Payment of Blackshear, Georgia for paving replacement on Morningside Drive and Coral Road at a cost not to exceed $125,959.50 and to be paid from local maintenance improvement grant funds. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? It's been motioned by our Commissioner Hopkins, seconded by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia to hold the city commission work session set for the Monday before the first Tuesday in the month of July 2021, on July 6, 2021, and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will hold its work session by ordinance set for Monday, July 5, 2021, and begin Independence Day, the Fourth of July holiday, to Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at 3:00 PM. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion.
It has been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the Waycross City Commission to cancel deed and to secure debt and for real property located at 807 Hill Street and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve the execution of a cancellation of the deed to secure debt for 10-year CHIP grant for 807 Hill Street for January 2000, excuse me, yeah, 2010. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, is there a motion on this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Hopkins, seconded by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Waycross, Georgia to amend rehabilitation assistance for 1121 Thomas Street as a part of the CHIP grant number 2017-112, approved in a resolution number R21-26 and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will authorize an amendment to the CHIP grant already authorized by the city commission on April 20 of 2021 for 1121 Thomas Street. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, do we entertain a motion for...
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second the motion.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Davis, seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia to approve payment of, oh, no, that's not, I'm sorry, we'll go to six. A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia to authorize an annual service contract with Satilla Animal Hospital to provide veterinary services for Waycross Animal Service and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve a contract with Satilla Animal Hospital for FY2022 veterinary services and for option for additional one-year extensions in the city's best interest. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Hopkins, seconded by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia to approve letter to be sent to Department of Community Affairs requesting extension of CHIP grant and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve the execution and sending of a letter to the Department of Community Affairs requesting adjustment or extension of the city of Waycross CHIP grant funding. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines, seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I think we discussed it last night, but the public needs to know, we do have these grants available for certain income, certain age, and certain areas of our city. So for repairs for the elderly that needs their houses fixed and they need to take advantage of this because if we don't spend it, it goes back to Atlanta. So if you know anyone in the community that fits the criteria of applying for these CHIP grants, they need to come to City Hall and see about this because now we've extended it till December for you to apply. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Davis?
And I'd like to add to that what Commissioner Hopkins said because some of the target areas are in District 1 and we need to get the word out and the person they need to get in touch with would be Mark, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So it is a, the target area is a part of, is some parts of District 1. And I encourage you to get out there and get in touch with Mark, get your name in the hat, because if you don't put your feet in the pot, the pot won't boil your feet.
Commissioner, treat.
Yes, have we also identified all the areas or you just said District 1? How many areas have we identified?
The target area.
I'm not sure of the additional areas that have been identified, but I think that was done before the actual grant was awarded. So they have to identify the area first and then based off that area, they give the funding.
We still going on on the last CHIP grant? Did you extend it?
Yes, sir. So when we apply for another grant, then we'll identify another area.
So would be District 1 that was identified in that last one?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it was.
Mostly.
Yes, it was District 1. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the clarity. Commissioner Solomon Gaines?
And the property owner, I'm sorry, it has to be, the person has to own the property. So we can't do it for an elderly person that lives in a rental property, for example. So the property has to be owned by the person applying for the grant and they have to actually live there. They have to actually live in that home. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to add that if they get in touch with Mark, any problems that they may have, Mark can guide them in correcting or putting themselves in where they can become more eligible.
Thank you, Commissioner. With all that discussion being had, is there any further discussion? Hearing none at this time. We'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Resolution passes. At this time, Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia to execute agreement and terms and condition documents for receipt of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will authorize the execution of documents necessary to make application for funds under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you so very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion regarding this resolution?
Move for approval.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Davis and seconded by Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Any discussion on this resolution?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
I would like to, if there are additional services that's going to be, that we can outline, that we can make it available to the public, I wish we could so that they would know exactly what these funds could be used for.
You want me to explain?
Or you can send it to me or however.
Okay, I will send those to you.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. At this time, Madam Clerk, do we have any guests?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we have one guest, Ms. Stephanie Adams. Just please state your name and address and just keep in mind you have five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner, and City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity to get up here and speak. I'm here on the behalf of Bethesda Recovery. As most of you know, June the 5th, we had a mom prom event. It was a huge, huge success. We were able to raise $37,571. And that, Bethesda Recovery has a special place in my heart because I'm actually one of the women from the recovery center. I am a person in long-term recovery. And that place took me off of the streets when I had no safe place to go. And the way that I see it reaching out to the community, it really touches my heart. I am not from Waycross, but I have fallen in love with Waycross and the people of Waycross. And one of the parts that really touched my heart on the mom prom was for that night, it was all women who gathered together. Nobody paid attention to who worked where, what color the skin was, what religion you were in, what church you went to, what social class you were in. We were all together as one, out there on the dance floor. And it was also an alcohol-free environment. And we had a ball. I mean, it was a lot of fun. And I appreciate everybody who has come together to help support this ministry and I just appreciate Waycross. You know, I see people who, I want to, something that's on my heart is to bring unity to this community. And sometimes I'm part of the hub, which is a RCO, a recovery community organization. And we've been doing, getting events started every four months to do an outreach to the youth in the area. And our hopes is to go around to every different park and just to feed the kids and to have fun, to make connection with the kids because the opposite of addiction is connection. And that's... because the opposite of addiction is connection, and that's how we change our community, is we connect with one another, we lean on one another so that we don't turn to the streets, so that we don't turn to the drugs, we turn to each other. So, I thank y'all again for giving me the opportunity to get up here and speak. Y'all have a blessed night.
Thank you too. Thank you so much. We have last call, we'll start with our Commissioner Davis.
Uh, come back to me, Mr. Mayor, because I'm still putting it together.
Okay. Commissioner Threet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say to all the city employees, I thank you for the job that you all are doing, and, uh, which is a great job, and I appreciate Chief Edens and Ms. China filling in while our city manager is out. Um, I wanna say, uh, a big thanks to, uh, our Waycross Police Department, what we had going on this past weekend. We had a lot of shootings over the city, and I really like to see that this community in Waycross coming together, and we try to put some of this gun violence behind us. Uh, we, we're talking about young people that are doing these things that, that are out there. Uh, Chief, I thank you for getting out of your bed, leading by an example, you and your assistant, Chief, showing your employees that you're standing by them, and that is a, a great role to play, and they see you doing this, they don't mind going an extra mile and helping you in, in, in that area right there, but I know as, as far as being a police officer, that job is tough, and I appreciate everything that you're doing for us, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, Commissioner Solomon Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, um, make the announcement, uh, on behalf of Fresh Communities, we're gonna have a June teeth celebration on June the nineteenth that's gonna take place at the Trembling Earth Complex, uh, from seven P. M. until twelve midnight. They're actually gonna have a, um, the festival, actual festival there, and so I agreed to go ahead and announce that, and everyone's invited to take part. I also have a question, I'm not sure if anyone here can answer it. I know we're getting a lot of, uh, text messages about water leaks all over the city. Are those water leaks the result of the new meters catching those, or, or what's happening with that? Do we know?
Um, no, ma'am, I think it's from the actual pipes themselves.
Okay.
But I will double check with E S G and get you a, a answer.
Okay, please do that.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm really considering, um, letting you all debit my water bill, and I want my water bill to be twenty dollars, because I had a leak and didn't know it.
Yes.
Seriously. Okay, so find out, um, and if those meters, whether or not those meters are picking up on those leaks.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to thank our guests for coming tonight and elaborating on that prom. I watched a little bit of it live, it looked like y'all were having a great time, so we thank you for coming, and, and thirty-seven thousand dollars was a lot of money, and, uh, it's a great thing for our community because women who have been in situations that they really didn't know how to get out of, it's really helped them a lot, and so I thank everybody involved that helped put that event on and who sponsored and gave money to it. That was great, so thank you very much, and thank you for coming and reporting on that as well. Um, when you have yard sales in the City of Waycross, uh, there is an ordinance, so you're supposed to have a permit, and, uh, we don't mind you having yard sales, but you are posting yard sale signs all over light poles which are against the rules, you cannot put them on the light poles, and when you do put them on light poles, at least have the courtesy or anywhere, we don't mind you putting the signs out and telling you having a yard sale, but please remember at the end of the day to pick your yard sale signs up because sometimes you're in the right of ways. Our men do all they can do to keep all the grass cut all over the city, and they have to stop and get off of the lawn mowers to move the signs and the sticks and the stands, so please be courteous when you have yard sales to go out at the end of the day and pick up your signs wherever you put them in the city. Thank you very much, and, Mr. Mayor, I think that's all, and thank the staff and China, great job you're doing. Thank you.
Yes, she is.
Our Commissioner Davis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, first of all, my heart goes out to all the ones that have lost someone since the last time we met, uh, to the Walker family, um, J. B. Walker, uh, he's a member of our family as well, and he passed away, and my heart goes out to that, that family. For those of you that are, that have been watching and mentioning to me about the, uh, the sign at E. Moore Park that was destroyed by, uh, automobile, uh, crashing into it, I talked with, um, with James Smart, he, he said that he, uh, uh, he, he's looking at it, and he's, and, 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 uh, I think you, you've gotten some contracts, you, you've gotten some bids coming up and so forth. Is that right? Yeah, because I've got a couple of things to ask you about that.
Mayor, Commissioner. Yes, uh, Commissioner Davis, I've actually spoken with, uh, two brick masons, uh, the problem being that the monument was built a long time ago, and the bricks that's there now are, um, I think in the past, there, there are still a few out there, they're trying to locate some. Um, we are actually in discussion if they can't find them to come back and remove the monuments there, and I'll save the center marble and come back and reconstruct it out of a different type of brick.
Yeah, because I did send you some alternatives bricks that we could possibly look at if we can't find that, that brick, because right now we just need to get it back up because it's, it's a damaged piece of property there, and it, it doesn't look good. Uh, the other thing is, um, let me see, uh, the storm drain, you, you said that you had already put that on your list at, at Dorothy and McDonald Street.
That's correct, yes.
So, so, it, it, can you give me a pretty good idea of when we might be able to get that storm drain?
We, we have several, um, we'll get locates, call in, because you can't do any digging without getting locates, uh, done first as far as cable, gas, that kind of stuff. Uh, once it's done, then we'll send our guys in, and they'll move that top off of it, and we'll have to construct a new box, because what it is, we get these big trucks that's running through the neighborhoods, maybe delivering to some of the houses, FedEx, UPS, whichever it may be, and they'll catch that curb, and when they catch it with that tire, it'll break part of the curb off, and that's where we're at now. The actual, uh, concrete won't hold up to this heavy equipment.
Yeah, I see where you did put, uh, traffic cones there, but now the traffic cones are falling down, so that was pointed out to me, and I, I really appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, the, um, the other thing is that the young lady talked about the, was talking about safe harbor, uh, and, and, and I like to see a lot of that, more of those kinds of services, uh, the family, the, the act, what is that, the, the money that's coming in, the...
Yes, sir, the American Rescue?
Yeah, uh, is, if, see if we can find some funds in that, because, uh, not only just for, um, people that are homeless, uh, that are out there, we, we need to have safe harbor for our kids, because there are a lot of kids right now that's in the, in, in our community, they don't have safe harbor to go to. Uh, we have gangs out there and so forth, and, but if they can find a way to get away from that, 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 that environment, uh, and, and Chief was saying that, that, you know, because of the shirt, the surge in, in gang violence in the community, the, a, a, a lot of our kids are being forced or frightened into participating. So, I, I'd like to see if we can try to build some type of service would give our kids that safe harbor they can go to rather than be around in the community being threatened and ostracized, so I, I appreciate that. And, Mr. Mayor, that, that, that falls right in line with what you have in mind as well, that we can just expand some of the services you want to do for youth, because youth participating and serving youth is usually what brings youth, uh, up and out and help repair whatever's being done. So, I, I too am very much concerned about the, the, um, the violence that's, that's in our community, and, um, and, 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 Chief, you're doing an excellent job, uh, and I appreciate that. Um, and, and the way your men are handling the, uh, the situation, uh, they don't go in and, and, and start a war, they go in to find out who's the perpetrator and to try to take him down and, and not go gun for gun, because, um, we know that, that violence we get, we get violence, and one thing about, um, what, what we're trying to do, uh, across this country, not only just in Waycross, is to de-escalate, not escalate. De-escalate the situation where we can make sure everybody goes home if we can and take the perpetrator to jail. So, uh, the more bullets we have flying out there, the more people are, are prone to be hurt, and, and, and because your, your men are trained, they're trained, they're trained how to handle themselves, they're trained to know how to go into situations. They, they have those long guns, uh, the long guns that are, that are sniper guns that, that, and, and I see it on television, how they take out just the perpetrator and, 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 and isolate those victims, uh, so, uh, I, 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 I wish you would, uh, look into that policy and make sure that, that your men are, 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 um, very well versed in that, and, 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 because sometimes, you know, if somebody's shooting at me, and I got something just as bad as they got, I pick it up and go too because that's in self-defense. So, I can only speak for where, where I live and where I was growing, where I grew up in, and so, my hat's off to you, you got a job doing, I think you know basically where those guns are coming from, and, Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate him, um, nailing it down and de-escalating, and, and he, he, he's doing an outstanding job, and my hat's off to him. Back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Threet, would you speak to, to our stormwater?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Madam City Act Manager China, I'm going back in reference to the stormwater, and I think we have something set up for a town hall meeting, we just need to get this out there so everybody knows what's going on.
Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Um, Commissioner.
Yes.
Um, as of June, I think that's the twenty-eighth, at five P. M. at the City Auditorium, we will be having a town hall meeting to discuss, um, the new fund that will be started, um, in this fall for storm utility with all the problems that we're having around the city. We're trying to ink, bring in revenue so that we can correct the problem, so on June twenty-eighth at five P. M. at the C. C. McCray Auditorium, please come out and, um, to get more knowledge on the new stormwater, um, utility fund. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and, and I would want to say one more thing, and I were asking people to come out, please, sir, please, ma'am, please come out, be informed about what's going on, not hearsay, but you're actually gonna get it from our City, uh, Finance Director here, and our, our E S G also is gonna be there answering questions, right?
Yes.
So, everyone's gonna be there, any kind of questions you may have to, uh, to ask, they'll be there to answer those questions, but we ask, please, ma'am, please, sir, please come out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Strickland, our mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Bethesda House, for turning out, and I think, appreciate the, uh, the, the feedback that you were able to give the community tonight and us. Uh, uh, from what I saw and heard, it was turning out to be a great event, and glad that y'all were there, and glad that we were able to, uh, people of the community to ever have that now, since, uh, COVID's kind of lifted a little bit, and we're able to get out a little more now. Thank you, everyone, for turning out tonight, thank you, Chief, for the prayer, I knew you'd be up to the task, appreciate it greatly. Uh, want to remind everyone, too, that it is, it is grass cutting season, and I know everybody's busy, I know the city, Mr. Guys are busy, but remember, too, when you are out there cutting your grass, when you get done, to be, either before you start or when you get done, be sure to blow your clippings back into your yard and remove them and not leave them in the street so they can get caught up into the stormwater, so maybe it'll help alleviate some of the problems that we are having and that we are facing with piping and flooding. You may not realize it, but when you do cut and, and let it blow into the street, it goes straight to the stormwater, and it creates problems, and so, uh, you know, with older pipes and things, you're actually adding more pressure to those pipes, so please be aware of that and just kind of police yourself, and, uh, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. With the comments that have been made tonight, my last call is more about thanking this commission for working together, and we do celebrate our Commissioner Threet, whose birthday was last week, last Tuesday. We are appreciative for what you've done and are doing, and all commissioners, thank you so very much for the hard work that you've been putting out and making certain that you connect with the districts. They don't know how valuable you are until they don't have you, so I can tell you, you're invaluable people, and we thank you for your work. I also want to thank this hard-working lady over here, Ms. China Agoo. One great thing, she's wearing so many hats, I, I tried to take decorum off of her so she wouldn't have to read that while she had other things to do. She has so many things that she's done, and she's doing everything very well. She seems to be calm at all points, no matter how much is given to her to do, and we appreciate you, and we thank you so very much for the hard work. You and Chief Edens, I tell you, that you, you both, I would say you were batting one-thousand. You did a wonderful job in helping our city manager, and this Chief, uh, Felice, who worked that academy, those junior academy students came through here, and you did a phenomenal job training them, and even commending on this last weekend situation that has already been addressed, but we want to thank you again, Chief. Ms. Linda, thank you. That's a hard word sometimes, keeping up with all those bids, but you're doing a great job, and we thank you for your hard work, and this, I tell you, our city attorney over here, I'm appreciative and thankful for him. He keeps things going, and he advises us well, and I, I, I can come to him and talk to him and ask him questions, he does a great job. And certainly, Mr. James Smart, yes, thank you, you keep it going. I, I was traveling this morning trying to get to my job, and en route to work, I noticed that you had workers out there working on Carswell Avenue, and I was really excited to see that they're getting some things done, and so when I came back from work to get over here to the city, I said to myself, good Lord, they're almost finished, so it looks good, it looks like they're getting everything done. So, to each of you citizens of Waycross and Ware County, you are blessed to have great commissioners and great workers in this community. We are blessed, and I am grateful that I'm a part of a great team, and we look forward to having great things happen. We have an executive session, and we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion and seconded. With that being said, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're now into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.